Ladies and gentlemen, it is seven o'clock on October the fourteenth. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Althenreath?
Here.
Commissioner Scully?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Warnock?
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Will you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a prayer, please? Eternal God, I want to thank you for every day that you give us here on earth. I want to say a special prayer tonight for those people that are battling cancer, especially breast cancer. I just had the opportunity to talk to Sally Teague, and she is back in the fight of cancer, so I pray for Sally. I pray for our armed forces that are overseas and in many conflicts. I know as the United States that we find ourselves sometimes at a crossroads, and hopefully you will keep all of our warriors safe and all those that may feel that they have no one and that are in a time of distress, I hope that you will be with them. I pray for the town of Rising Sun. I pray that you will give this board guidance and stay with us in every decision that we make and that we will move the town of Rising Sun towards the future. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from September the 23rd town meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next on the agenda is the reporting of an executive session from October the 7th, 2014. Town Clerk?
I have it.
Commissioner Warnock, do you have that?
Yes. On October 7th, 2014, at 6:30 PM in the second floor of Town Hall, we had an executive session. It was motion to open the meeting by Commissioner Althenreath. The second was by Commissioner Scully. All members of the elected body were present. The motion to hold an executive session was made by Commissioner Althenreath. The second was Commissioner Scully. The motion passed 4-0. The citation of authority, purpose, and accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act, Title 10, Government Procedures, Subtitle V, Meetings. This meeting was closed in order to discuss, number one, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, motion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Topics discussed were personnel policies. Persons other than the elected body present at the closed session was Town Administrator Calvin Bonnenberger. Executive actions, no actions taken. Adjournment was motioned by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Walker. The vote was 4-0. The motion to leave executive session was by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Walker. That passed 4-0. And the motion to adjourn the meeting was motioned by Commissioner Warnock, seconded by Commissioner Walker, and that passed 4-0. The meeting adjourned at 10:30 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Moving forward to our business meeting items, the first thing on our business meeting items is Resolution 2014-08, which is entitled "Our Arts Council," and that's Commissioner Warnock.
This Resolution 2014-08, Creation and Appointment of the Town of Rising Sun Arts Council. If everybody has a copy of that, do we have a copy for everybody?
No, remember "we."
Okay. I thought "we."
But I can go get it.
If you can, that'd be great.
Sure. Got it.
Resolution concerning the creation, appointment, and scope of responsibilities of an art council made for the purposes of stimulating economic opportunity and to promote, cultivate, and sustain the arts for the people of Rising Sun, whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized and governed by Article 23A of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas the mayor and commissioners wish to support the arts and have found other jurisdictions have used arts and entertainment to stimulate economic activities, and whereas they would like to create an arts council and further appointment of a committee chair and two other individuals to serve for staggered three-years terms, and whereas the committee will be hereforth known as the Rising Sun Arts Council, and whereas the committee will perform the following duties. One, organize events and coordinate with local officials to have arts in the park, gallery events, and fundraisers. Two, offer and organize local education opportunities such as youth and senior citizens' art programs, as well as provide teaching opportunities for local artists. Three, coordinate with local schools to put on an art show, change out art in Town Hall, raise funds to provide awards, scholarships to local middle and high school art students. Four, effectively communicate the value of art in the community, encourage cultural enrichment, attract artisan-based businesses. When you get the resolution, there's gonna be an item five. We're gonna cross that out, so that'll be removed. So the new item five, right now it's item six. Partner with the Historic Society to create a historical museum, art gallery, and community art education center that will be located in the town of Rising Sun and open to the public to include studio hours. Six, serve as an adjunct committee to the Town of Rising Sun Economic Development and Community Revitalization Committee. And seven, serve as an advisory review board to the Town of Rising Sun Planning Commission on initiatives related to land development involving community arts and related educational programs. Now therefore be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun approved and adopted this resolution on this fourteenth day of October, 2014. Just a little bit on item five that we removed. It was, it kind of developed, like, the legal corporate structure of the Arts Council was decided that really shouldn't be in the resolution, that that should be decided later. Nonprofit status or whatever will become necessary.
And I believe we all received an email.
You did get a copy of this, yeah.
So this is not the first time.
No, this is definitely not new. It shouldn't be new to anybody.
Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2014-08 entitled Creation and Appointment of the Town of Rising Sun Arts Council.
I motion that we approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
It is passed. Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. Next on the agenda is citizens' input. Thank you. The only speaker on our agenda tonight is Jeff Akkenbach. Good to have you back, Jeff. Hope you're feeling better.
Good evening. Sorry to have missed so many meetings, but life is filled with surprises. Suppose a nation in some distant region should take the Bible for their only lawbook, and every member should regulate his conduct by the precepts there exhibited. Every member would be obliged in conscience to temperance, frugality, industry, to justice, kindness, and charity toward his fellow man, and to piety, love, and reverence toward Almighty God. In this commonwealth, no man would impair his health by gluttony, drunkenness, or lust. No man would sacrifice his precious time to cards or any other trifling and mean amusement. No man would steal or lie and in any way defraud his neighbor, but would live in peace and goodwill with all men. No man would blaspheme his maker or profane his worship, but a rational and manly, a sincere and unaffected piety and devotion would reign in all hearts. What a utopia. What a paradise would this region be? And of course, that is not my words. That was our first Vice President, our second President, John Adams, who also said this. Now, he wrote this brief statement in a letter to his wife, so I suspect he was talking to his children, but I think it does apply to us. It says, "Postarity. You will never know how much it costs this present generation to preserve your freedom. I hope you will make a good use of it. If you do not, I shall repent in heaven that I ever took half the pains to preserve it." And I only bring these up because we're losing our freedom. We are not safeguarding our freedoms that those men sacrificed much to grant to us. So, you're the guardians, as I've said many times. I hope you will really be conscientious to consider these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Hearing none, we're gonna move forward into the mayor's report. My report is pretty brief tonight. I did want to say a special thank you to the, and I think Commissioner Warnock will probably echo this, to the Rising Sun Historical Society for the wonderful job that you all did on the Civil War reenactment. Everyone that was there talked about the fantastic time they had and being able to look and explore all the different exhibits that they had there, as well as watching the battles. It was fantastic, and I'm very much looking forward to next year, which, from what I've heard, is going to be bigger than we've ever had. So that'll be very interesting to have more Civil War reenactors there. I did want to say a special thanks to Shelley LaShire for donating the artwork that you see outside on the side of Town Hall by Main Street. When you drive by, you will see three breast cancer ribbons, and we are inviting people that have experienced cancer themselves, have had family that may have been impacted by cancer, or friends, to come and sign and leave a message of hope for those that may be battling breast cancer. Our first signer tonight was former Mayor Sally Teague. Sally is back in the fight for cancer, and I know, speaking on behalf of this entire board, we wish her well on recovery. So, moving forward, the next thing that I wanted to say was just a reminder that this Saturday is our Halloween Spooktacular, our Fall Spooktacular. It is 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We have a lot of exciting, fun events happening. We have a farmer that I just recently got off the phone with from Lancaster County that is donating over 250 pumpkins to the event for painting, so I am very, very happy, and it is going to take our Public Works crew a long time to load all those pumpkins up. So they're not gonna like me too much when I tell them that tomorrow. Sorry, Ron. The next thing I wanted to say was that we, I have been overwhelmed with the amount of business support that we had in this community and outside of this community, from people donating gift cards, from people donating monetarily, and even coming free of charge to this event just to help the Rising Sun community, to come out and support us here in the town. So we are going to have tons of events. Bring your children. Even if your kids are youth, teenagers, they're still gonna love the attractions, whether it's a Nerf battlefield, or riding a bull, or we're gonna have a lot of obstacle courses and fun games. There's gonna be trick-or-treating and a costume contest, so it's gonna be a great event, and I hope to see everyone there on Saturday. The last thing I wanted to say was a personal note, and that is a welcome to the young man in the second row. He is my exchange student from France. His name is Victor, so if you see us out and about, come say hello. He is here for the next two weeks, experiencing American culture, and I'm really excited to have him here. So, moving forward, we're gonna move forward into staff reports. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We experienced a little bit of a technical glitch today with the computers, therefore my report's gonna be very short. We have approximately 334 calls since the last town meeting. There's no significant trends, and during that period, we also had the drug take-back, which was quite successful. We were able to fill three of the 33-gallon trash bags full of household prescription drugs. And that is my report, if there's no questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
There are no financials this evening, and our town administrator is not feeling well, so I wish him well on his recovery. And we're gonna move into the Historical Preservation Commission report.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. My report will be very brief. The 17th, which I believe is this week, the Mount Harmon trip will be taking place. It is open to the public. Anybody wishes to go, feel free to go. We're meeting over at Jane's Church at 11:00, and carpooling from there if you want a carpool. Otherwise, you can just drive down yourself and meet us there. Bring up picnic lunch, because there's no facility at Mount Harmon for eating, so if you want to eat after the tour. The tour is two hours long. Other than that, the only thing I might say is, thank you, Mayor, for the compliments that you gave us for the Civil War reenactment. I can tell you, it was very successful. We got great feedback. We had 510 children go through on Friday, which was great. And yes, we are looking forward to next year. There is a contingent from, I believe it's New Jersey, that is supposed to come to the reenactment next year, and part of a medical unit, so it ought to prove to be quite interesting. Mr. Warnock has some fantastic photos. He caught the cannon with the fire coming out the end of the cannon, and it's in the smoke along with it, which I would love to see. I looked on our website, and I didn't see any of those photographs.
They're on the town's Facebook page.
Oh, I hate that. I don't go on Facebook. Put it on the town's website.
Yeah, I gotta work on, if it can fit the dimensions of the, yeah.
Link it up to the historic little page, because there's nothing on there. With that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any old business tonight? Any new business tonight?
Yes.
Commissioner Warnock?
I would like to make an appointment to the newly-formed Arts Council. I'd like to appoint Shelley LaShire to the position of Chair of the Arts Council.
I'm asking for a formal motion to approve, and I agree with that, Commissioner Warnock, to appoint Ms. Shelley Thalia LaShire to our Rising Sun Arts Council.
I so motion.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? The only discussion point, I think, is, is thank you for serving, and I hope that this Arts Council becomes very successful. I hope that we will, it'll also end up impacting us economically. So, thank you for serving. With that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thank you. I'm gonna hold off on this.
Okay. No problem.
Any new business besides that? Hearing none. Into the Commissioners' comments, Commissioner Althenreath.
Few items that our Public Works guys have been working on. They've done some repairs to some potholes on Pearl Street in front of the middle school. Last week, they were out cleaning storm drains, since we're getting leaves falling and everything, and we've had these storms rolling up. They've got out and took care of that. They're gonna be replacing some fire hydrants in the next, in the coming weeks, some that are inoperable and deteriorating. There's another repair to sidewalk driveway apron on Pearl Street that has gotten put behind, that they are gonna get to. And they also did some work on the sidewalks up in Maple Heights in front of the bank, where the children walk down to go to the bus stop. That was really dangerous, and they come in, had to take out about four sections and fix that, and really leveled that out nice. Want to thank Cirillo Brothers for the work they did on Maple Heights Lane and Maple Leaf Drive. They came in and in two days knocked that job out, milled it down, fixed the soft spots, and paved that, and came in significantly under the amount we budgeted for, and we waited nine years, and they were able to do that job in two days. So, want to thank them. They do good work. Dave and I and you, we were all out there. We saw what was going on, and they nonstop worked and did a fantastic job, and it really adds to the appeal of both Maple Heights Apartments and the home community. So, that's all I've got on streets and sidewalks right now. We have a P&amp;Z meeting next week on Monday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM here. Reminder, we moved that meeting from the fourth Monday of each month to the third, and we are still looking for members who are interested. Drop us a letter with your intent, with all your contact information, and we'll get to you. It does take a little time, because we only meet once a month, and last week, last month in September, due to personnel issues, we were unable to have a meeting. So we've got some stuff to catch up on, and we're continuing, and we're very close to finishing up our Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, which is quite lengthy, that will help the town going forward with new developments. So, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Althenreath, and I did want to echo what you said about Cirillo Brothers. I think they did do a fantastic job, not only on the Maple Heights project, but also on Cherry Street and Mount Street and the other streets that we had repaved. I think they've done fantastic work. I did want to give you, I guess, I don't want to say advice, but I wanted to let you know that I was contacted by a resident. I'm sure Commissioner Warnock let you know, but since we're on record, I'll make sure that she knows. There is a lady, that I will give you her name after the meeting, who contacted me that lives on Cooper, and there is a significant area of sidewalk that needs to be fixed. And I do agree with her that it does look pretty bad, and there are kids that walk down to the bus stop, so if you wouldn't mind looking into that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah, anybody can contact me through my email also, or drop us a line here at Town Hall, and we'd be glad to come out and look at it. And we've got, I've got a list in my notebook here, and we're just trying to get to them as weather permits, and we can do concrete work a lot farther up in the season than they can do the blacktop paving work. And they've got a lot of jobs lined up, a lot of material ordered, and jobs that they want to go forward with.
That's good. Thank you, Commissioner Althenreath. Commissioner Scully?
What I have to report is that we are going to be the host on October 27th and 29th of a youth mental health first aid program. Participants of the program will attend both sessions. It's 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's half-day sessions. Will earn a certificate in youth mental health first aid. And just to give you a little background on it, it is presented by the Maryland Coalition of Families for Children's Mental Health. It's funded by a grant that provides the instructors. We are the first to offer such a program, so we're very excited about it. We are hosting it in conjunction with STEPS Recovery Resources, Operation Pack-In, and we'll host it in this meeting room. The youth mental health first aid program is training people to offer, young people experiencing mental health issues, a first aid appropriate until other help is received. And the people that would be good participants for this program would be anyone who works with children or adolescents, parents, teachers, school administrators, coaches, camp counselors, youth ministers, volunteers in the youth program. So, really hoping that we have a big turnout for this program. We have to have a minimum of 15 people, and we can have a maximum of 25. So if we do get an overwhelming response, we are going to hope to schedule other programs. April Foster and Carrie Miller of the STEPS program are coordinating the registration for us. So I did leave some flyers on the podium. We've posted it on the Facebook page, and we'll also be going to the schools, to the advisors there, and making sure we make churches and schools aware of it as well. So that's October 27th and 29th, 9 to 1. Both days require attendance, so we hope that we have a full meeting room for that event. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Scully. Commissioner Walker?
The work at the sewer plant is proceeding along nicely now. Very pleased with how that's going. Town Administrator Bonnenberger and I have also talked about some four-inch water line that we think needs to be replaced, but that, we haven't finalized anything there. Other than that, I would like to echo what Mr. Mummy said about the town's website. It would be nice if we could get more of the things that are put on the town's Facebook page onto the town website.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Walker.
Because I don't look at Facebook.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker. Commissioner Warnock?
Yeah, I want to echo the mayor's gratitude towards the Historical Commission. It was a great event, and talking to Major General, I meant, Major General, I think? Yeah, I think it was Major General John Howke. It sounds like that medical unit's like, something like 40 to 60 additional persons with it, and then the other, you know, I mean, it might be like double the size next year that it was this year, so it could be fairly significantly larger next year. So, that, you know, it's a great event, and if it doubles in size, I think that'd be even better. On the playground at Richardson Park, we got a couple estimates back on the sliding boards. There's two options. The current sliding board at the park is a spiral, and to replace it with the exact same spiral-type slide is gonna run us for the sliding board and delivery, not including unloading the truck, removal of the old slide, or installation. So just the board and delivery would be about $5,800. You know, it might be something we can have Public Works do, but it may not, because it's a fairly sophisticated, that particular type of sliding board is a fairly sophisticated install. There's a, you know, everything has to be like lined up perfectly and everything, so I don't know. The second option, which would be a straight sliding board coming off, is significantly less expensive. The cost of the sliding board and freight, again, the delivery, is around just shy of $1,600. So I'm inclined to go towards the straight sliding board, given the lower cost. It will fit there. You know, and I guess, you know, I haven't been on a sliding board in a long time. I'm trying to think if I ever went on, if there even were spiral sliding boards when we were kids. But I'm assuming the straight sliding board would be almost as much fun, I hope. So I think that may be the direction we go.
If not, you can let Commissioner Warnock know.
Yeah. I'm sure my email will be full tomorrow.
Wax paper.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So I'm not gonna ask for any approvals yet, because I just got this information tonight, but once I have a chance to talk to Public Works and discuss it over a little bit, make sure that we're good on the measurements and everything, then we'll move forward, probably next meeting, on replacing that sliding board.
A question.
Yes.
Has the town explored whether our insurance will pay anything?
We have about a $5,000 deductible on that, so if we do, I mean, like, we could put a claim in. The question is, on the one, you're not gonna, it wouldn't be worth it.
Well, it's late in the year now, but if we file that claim, then we'll use that deductible, so the next time something happens, we will already have taken care of the deductible.
I'll have to check. I think it's per incident.
Is that a deductible per incident?
I think it's per incident, but I'll have to check, yeah. So we were gonna check into that, but, yeah, it's, especially given the cost of the one, but if it's a $5,000 deductible, that's still pretty steep. So, yeah. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. The one thing I did want to echo, and I'm not sure Commissioner Warnock mentioned in his comments, is that the period of leniency has lapsed for Diddy Richardson Park, and I am personally offering a $100 reward to anyone that has information about the incident there and the damage that has occurred. We have a zero tolerance policy with this kind of stuff, and we are moving forward, and we have, both myself and Commissioner Warnock have had talks with Chief Peterson. We are beefing up patrols there, and there are surveillance going on there at this time. So, if you have any information, please contact Commissioner Warnock or the Town of Rising Sun at (658) 5353. With that being said, is there any more business to come before the board? I did want to thank all of you for keeping this meeting brief. I did say I would like to spend some time with my exchange student, so thank you.
And watch the Orioles.
And watch the Orioles, so go O's. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.